Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock on December twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm calling the Select Board meeting to order. I will let you everybody know that we are Zooming this live to anybody that's on, and it's being recorded for future broadcast on YouTube and on two Spectrum channels. And if we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go Skip!
Motion except payroll, oh, motion except minutes.
From December twelve.
Second.
December twelve, yeah.
Second.
Roll call?
Clark eye.
Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
White man eye.
And Benoit eye.
Motion, move, sign Treasury warrant twenty-three thirteen and payroll twenty-three P W thirteen.
If I may through the chair?
Yes.
A couple of things on the Treasury warrant, not outstanding, but above and beyond is a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifteen cents. That was for Tosco Construction for the end invoice for Maple. So that's Chapter ninety funds. And the other thing is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents, and that's for modular communications for the tower site in Povis and for supplies. Again, that's a grant, State nine-one-one.
Okay.
And one thing on the payroll side is just a payout, final payout of accruals for Officer Gilroy, who left Rutland to go to another town. That's everything.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call?
Did you have a second?
Do I have a second? No?
Second.
We should have had a discussion.
Clark eye.
Galvin eye excluding Safe Plus.
Nichols eye excluding COA wages and election wages.
Roll call?
White man eye. White man.
Clark eye. I don't know where I did that.
Did we get white man eye? All right. And Benoit eye. Sorry. Everybody, it's such a rush. I'm rushing to get on.
You can zoom more.
Did you get everybody?
Okay. I mean, you don't even need to say anything. You just need to say yes and you're done.
I guess it's getting late.
New business funds for new ambulance. Plan to fund difference in costs not covered by federal grant. The board was in receipt of a backup from Chief Knipe, and everything is laid out there. If there are any questions, now's the time to do so. Chief, if you have something that you want to add or if you want to wait to see if there's any questions.
I'll wait to see if there's any questions.
Okay.
Get this along. I think just the one, if I may through the chair, one important thing to know is that I've talked to Officer Second and read the report is very important. As Chief Knipe says, the supply chain is just terrible everywhere. And I would like, hopefully, the board to move forward on this because it's not worth losing a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant and having to take this from elsewhere.
And I thank you because it seems that you chased down one.
Yes.
You chased any of them.
Yeah, I did.
And I thank you for making that work.
Yep.
So I'll make the motion to authorize the town administrator to send a letter to the P C L Customs New England Fire Apparatus Dealer that we are canceling our order dated September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one due to the inability to meet the delivery and timeline and has no reflection on the company or product in question, and authorize the town administrator to authorize, authorize the administrator, the authorities to sign all necessary documents to purchase a Burnham ambulance, Bron ambulance, and necessary related equipment there, too.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Sorry, I just wanted to thank you, Seth, for doing this. And I know that hopefully we can still keep pressure on, you know, federal government to understand that this is supply chain. It's not any, I mean, I know that they're aware it's supply chain issues and not the town's act of effort to try to meet their deadlines and the cost, the cost within those deadlines. But thank you, Seth.
Yep.
Clark eye.
Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
White man eye.
And Benoit eye.
I'm going to go with that one.
Yes.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to use ARPA funds as necessary in the amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand, five hundred to cover the increase in cost to procure the new ambulance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Clark eye.
Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
White man eye.
And Benoit eye.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief.
Are you leaving?
Yep.
Thank you, Seth.
Run away. Okay. Wanted to put a community paradigm in a search for town administrator on the agenda to see where we're at. I don't want to have a long discussion about this. I know we have a position statement that I think was sent quickly because I think there was a miscommunication thinking that we would have paradigm on, a community paradigm on to have discussion with them. But it was more, but it was more just internally to check in, make sure everybody had their conversations with, with the search firm and see if you had any questions or any insights about what was, about your, certainly don't need to reveal anything that you had conversations with, but if there was anything that wanted to be highlighted or reiterated from conversations.
Am I, through the chair, am I completely wrong? I thought we were going to try to expand our positions in the town, like adding a H R person and doing a part-time T A to take some of the load and put it where it should be instead of on the town administrator?
Well, you know, I, I don't know that that was the scope of, of the search community.
I mean, this is what I talked to them about.
Right.
All right.
That's what you talked about.
I just suggested it strongly and heavily. And I mean, this is just as town administrator. We've had four or five, and they cannot do the job with what they have to work with because it's too much on one, one person to do H R and everything else.
Skip, I appreciate you bringing that up because I, too, you know, reflected again in the past couple of weeks that since two thousand and fifteen, we've had six either T As or interims. And I wonder, and I keep wondering, and I hate to, some people might think I'm beating a dead horse, but what are we, what are we doing differently to make it work this time?
We're not doing a dead thing.
So that's, that's my concern that I'm going to put out there once again. What are we doing differently to see if we can make it this, work at this time? We keep having, you know, that's in fifteen, so seven years, we've had almost a different T A, an average of a A T A or interim T A every year. And the consistency is not there. And what, what's, I think something's broken or something's not working right for the town of Rutland. And I, and I wonder, again, like it came out with me thinking, talking with the search firm, and apparently, I, Skip, you have, you and I have not spoken, so we don't know what.
No, we haven't. I mean, it's, I've been through them all. I've been, was with the original, that was hired, was with Margaret, all the way through. And each time it was suggested, the last time we're hiring Ron, it was suggested, but we had some strong-minded people on the board, and they didn't, didn't want to listen. So maybe we got enough people, open-minded people on this board now that will think of a way that we can correct our broken status.
Well, I think we fill this position with somebody we feel is qualified, then we look, we look, we look at them down the road if they need assistance. But, I mean, we have to start here first. You can't hire assistance until you get the position.
No, right, right. No, I understand. You know, there's, there's, there's also an idea that we could hire somebody with a strong H R. And I, I have a little bit of P S, PTSD with this in that we bring somebody on for a contract, and we end up spending the hundred thousand dollars to buy them out again if this is, if it's not working. And I don't, don't know that we've changed anything in this. You know, reading the, reading the position statement sounds a lot like what we just had. We're just like rinse and repeat, rinse and repeat with this. And I guess I don't, I don't know, I'm afraid of setting ourselves up to fit. Should we, should we hire somebody a little less, somebody who would like to aspire to be a T A? And maybe use Gary and Tamika's experience to groom them in, say, it's a one-year, I don't, it's not a temporary position, but it's a one-year position that you, we make sure they're going to fit, that we, you know, give some transition time to. I, I, I don't know. And this is me going back to, I wasn't real comfortable with doing this. And so this is, it's again resurfacing, so.
Well, I think we, we already hired this company. Go through the process and see who's out there. And we haven't even interviewed one person yet.
I know.
And he's already fired.
Well, it's not already fired.
He or she is already fired, so.
It's just.
Through the chair, I mean, a lot of the discussion was that we would have to pay a lot more money to find somebody who's going to, and we don't have a lot more money because money is kind of a problem. But people want a grant, right? People want a finance person. People want economic development coordinator. People, I mean, we can't afford all these things. And if we try to find somebody that has strong qualities like that, we can't afford that person either. So we need to come up with an alternative of how we're going to get what we want. Like I said, whether it's to increase and have like an assistant with a full, you know, a part-time person or, I don't know what you, what people expect, but you're right, Carol. This is exactly what we've done over and over. This is the exact same claim we've had with every administrator we've had so far. This is no different. So I don't know what the answer is. I don't know what everybody else's conversations were with, with the firm and stuff, but they, several times commented that they, they want us to pay more money.
Oh, yeah, there's no question. The average, the average salary, this is the number he gave me. He said between one-twenty and one-forty is what he told me. I believe it was right, I think that's what it was, one-twenty and one-forty was the average for a town this size.
That's why I think the first.
I, sorry, guys, this is Leah. I have to admit, I haven't talked with Sharon or John yet because I've been swamped with work stuff and holiday stuff. It's on my list to do this week if it's not too late. But I think for a town of Rutland's size of ten thou, almost ten thousand, we need a full-time administrator and we need other positions. I think it's, we have, I, I keep, I feel like I beat a dead horse is we have to come to the realization that we need to invest in our town, and that's going to take funding. And there's no magic solution, and it's hard conversations, and it's painful. And we see the, the comments and everything with the budget cuts from this past year that, that our departments are struggling with and everything. And now we have, if we have a strong, capable, well-rounded town administrator who's able to come in and, and guide, not do everything, but guide and empower and, and exude confidence and that is able to make those connections at, within, you know, the region and within the state and within the federal level to get Rutland on, back on the radar as far as this is what we are, this is what we need, is what's available. I think, yes, I, I don't disagree that there is value in having an H R person and a finance person, especially as a town this size. But I think if we don't have a, an administrator, a, a head person to oversee all of that, then we're, we're, we're kind of working without a head at that point.
I disagree with it, I really do. Because a part, a part-time administrator would be available with a phone call if they weren't here, if you had a, a H R person, if there was a problem.
Who's this person?
Huh?
Who's this person?
I have no idea.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You don't even know who they are, so what are you?
But you've got to start with an H R person, and then you find yourself a part-time or a, a part-time town administrator.
I, I disagree. Full-time. You need a leader in this town. You don't need a part-time.
You can disagree to disagree. Like, not change.
Just spinning our wheels as usual.
Not changing a bit of our structure.
Years ago, the town voted, years ago, the town voted for a town administrator, a full-time town administrator.
No, it didn't say full-time. It said town administrator. You look back and look at the paperwork.
Well, you know, regardless of, of full-time or part-time, years ago, the town did do that. But I also, we haven't proved that we've been successful doing that. And if we're just going to do it again and hope that this time, I, I just don't know. I think something needed, needs to change with what we're, what we're asking for. And like I said, reading the position statement is, it's, I imagine a lot of it is template. I don't think that they rewrite this from scratch. But I, I don't, it's really, like I said, made me reevaluate again. What have we done to ensure that we're spending our ten-thousand-dollar resource well? That we're spending a hundred and thirty-plus or minus salary and all the benefits to go with? We haven't been successful. And if you keep, what is the, the definition of insanity is keep doing the same thing and hope for a different outcome? And, and that's what we're doing. We keep doing the same thing and hoping that this time is going to be the right thing. But we haven't changed anything. We haven't learned a lesson that six to seven people in six to seven years is.
So I guess I look at it a little bit differently because I look as, at it as Margaret was very, was a very successful first-time town administrator, first time in Rutland, like, for Rutland, a first-time town administrator. And she fulfilled her contract. It was a three-year contract. She fulfilled it. To my knowledge, there was no honest communication with her as to why she left Rutland. The, I had very little overlap with her, and the story that I got is different than the stories that I've heard rumblings from elsewhere. And so it, there's that. Then we had, I thought, Mike Nicholson's tenure, although it was short, and I think we all are, were disappointed that he wasn't, he didn't fulfill his three-year contract. I don't see that as a non, as an unsuccessful administrator. He, he brought a lot to, he got Rutland on the map at the, the regional level, but also the state and federal level. And a lot of, you know, the Heights property moving forward was a lot of help with Mike just getting those contacts and, and working with R D I C and everything. So I think, I look at it differently that it, they weren't unsuccessful tenures, that all of them were not unsuccessful tenures, but more that maybe they didn't fulfill our hope that it would be a multi-term position. And I think what we've heard, at least in the past, you guys have spoken with Sharon and John, that with our salary, it's tough to have someone that's willing to stay, look at this at a long-term, multi, multi-contract position unless we're able to make some, some big improvements, to Skip's point, as bringing, either bringing in additional high-level support for the administrator or additional salary and, or maybe both or whatever.
If I may, through the chairs.
Sure.
And it's just, it's just me speaking. And I'm honestly not trying to sway anyone, the whole board, certainly one way or the other. Because I feel that anybody that would be filling the position of town administrator anywhere, it's not just a job. You really have to appreciate the community. You have to, to look forward to the people that you work with. You have to have a strong network of all your department heads and also the staff and everyone here, the residents, certainly, they're the real bosses here. So to play on, on your words, Carol, if I may, and that word was groom. And I shared with John and Sharon when I talked with them, and I have no problem telling you because my fear is that we'll either get, you'll either get someone who's young and wants to bounce, and it's a bouncing profession. It's, it always, it has been. Or you'll get somebody up in age, if you will, looking to up their retirement. So for you to use the word groom, an opinion that I, just an opinion that I've thought about, is just that. So, and I know there's going to be an article, annual, somebody's bringing forth an article for an assistant town administrator. So listening to all the comments I've heard, talking to the people I've talked to, just the thought that passed through my head is to go for that full-time assistant town administrator and, and have that person groomed and, and have that person know the community. You can't just, you can't just, to me, you just can't take an outsider and fill a chair like that and really, you don't have any history, you don't have any knowledge. You don't, you're not familiar with the people. Was one of the things that I certainly looked forward to when I, when I got the phone call to see if I would fill in is I know the people. I know the team players. I know what they can do. I know their fields of expertise. They work well with me. The board works well with me. I don't have an issue with that. But again, believe me, I'm not trying to sway anybody one way or the other, just stating my opinion. So if someone came in as in a position of permanent, full-time assistant town administrator, and you had a part-time, not necessarily me, town administrator, I'm just, I just want to stress that. I'm not here selling myself or pushing myself. I, I enjoy it here. I enjoy you folks. Tamika's okay sometimes, too. And it appears to me that we're getting, getting the work done. And I'm not saying that, especially myself, that I can sit in that chair and get everything done. I, I, I need the help. I appreciate the help. I appreciate the input. And I feel I know where to go to ask the question if I need it. But that's just me. I'm not, I'm not trying to, believe me, I'm not trying to sway anybody because if you told me tonight, Keller, you're all done January first? Okay, so be it. I just want what's best for you folks, what's best for the town. That's, that's what I feel you need.
So through the chair, did we give some kind of paperwork to this company as far as to start the process, what we're looking for?
Yes, we agreed to sign the contract, right? Is it?
So we didn't outline like what we're looking for at this point?
Oh. No, just conversations, right. So you, do you think there's something more that needs to be done?
Well, no, I just wanted to know what we've already told them we're looking for because we don't seem like we've agreed on what we're looking for yet. So I just want to, no, I just wanted to make sure we didn't like already send something and say that this is specifically, you know, we're looking for specific things or.
Well, I thought we had agreed when we talked to one of the last meetings. What changed from then to here?
Well, it's, it was.
It was voted on.
Right. It was to move forward with hiring a town administrator. This position statement came from conversations with the board, department heads, I think, and whatnot. I, I'm not settled with that. I don't know if anybody else has had time to read it, but I did not expect to go through it tonight because people just got it in its own holiday week. But my review of it, my conversations, just, I'm, I think nobody would be surprised to know, to hear again that I'm not real comfortable with moving forward with another town administrator.
So why did you vote yes the last time?
To, to make it happen because that was, that's, you know, I heard that numerous people were complaining that we weren't doing it. So, you know, regardless of.
But that hasn't changed.
Well, I didn't sit there and tell you that I've had numerous people saying they think that everything's working really well right now. So, and I'm not a, I, I went along to get along, I guess.
And I'm sorry, I couldn't be here at night.
I guess I struggle a little bit that when I had asked before to even just have conversations about process, it was kind of pushed off. And it wasn't even that we could, could be having this conversation before we had agreed to hire, even hire a search firm. And so I think that this is, I'm frustrated because I feel like this is conversations that I had been trying to have and nobody wanted to, to have, and then it just got pushed off and pushed off. And then we hire a search firm, and in my mind, that is that we're moving forward. I also would be interested, for a town of Rutland's size, I don't, are there, is it odd that Rut, that a town of Rutland's size has a full-time town administrator? Is it more common that they have a part-time town administrator or a full-time assistant and, and kind of more professional level staff without a town administrator? I, it, it seems like it's a Rutland, that it's a, it's a concern or a problem that Rutland needs to work out. We, as a town, need to work out and not with the search firms or with the people that apply. I, I think we see around us that they've had successful town administrators and managers over the course of years and that they do the kind of discerning work internally themselves to then go forward. And I, I guess I'm frustrated that any attempts to try to do that discernment were kind of not willing to be had until now.
I, I guess, Leah, I don't know what, I'm not on the same page because I don't, I don't know what conversations we haven't had.
Well, I don't either. That's why I'm a little confused because we took a vote. We voted to hire this firm in, in order to hire a town administrator. The vote was taken. You said you went along to get along, but you voted.
And, and I own that. But what I'm saying is that going through this process has brought it all back up again for me to the point where I'm not real comfortable. I don't, I, and it's, and it's the, the point again, if you even, if, if, the statistics are worse if you take Margaret out of the first three years. If she was three years, then it's been even less, it's, the turnover has been even greater than one a year. And I just, like I said, looking at everything that we're doing, and now that it's in writing, the conversations have been started, I don't know what, how is this going to be different? How, how have we made strides ourselves to make it different? And, and Leah, I understand what you're saying because we, with a town the size of Rutland, but I, I don't, I think that a lot of towns the size of Rutland probably have at least a part-time assistant T A. I don't know about a full-time assistant T A. But I also, Rutland seems to be very different in, in the fact that other people seem to have better, better luck keeping town administrators. So, so, you know, what, what's going on? That's, that's what I want to know for myself. And I, I don't want to keep dragging this out, but I, like I said, things came up because of the exercises that we've gone through. Leah, I'm not sure if you were thinking that we were going to have more pointed conversations about a job description or the type of person we wanted to hire. I, I don't know if that was what you were alluding to, and I missed that.
I think, I mean, if, 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 what I'm understanding from the conversation tonight, and I apologize that I'm not there because I think having this conversation with one person remote is tricky, is that. person remote is tricky, is that some of the board is leaning more towards not hiring a full-time town administrator and looking to either hire a part-time town administrator or a full-time assistant town administrator without a town administrator at all, or eventually then hiring a part-time town administrator to go along with the full-time assistant town administrator. And I guess my confusion and frustration is that this conversation as far as what we would be looking to hire and everything didn't happen before. The discernment wasn't, we, there was no opportunity to have conversation in the summer or the fall leading up to this, and it was kind of, in, in my perspective, everything that we have from the, the search firms and everything was for a full-time town administrator. And maybe that's my own na- negativity, but I just feel like this conversation that we're having here would have been better to have had before even entering into, you know, potential conversations with search firms. And so that's, I guess, my confusion and my frustration, that, that it's kind of, we're supposed to be a five-member board and kind of govern together as a five-member board and what's best for the town. And I hear the concerns as far as what are we doing differently and, and what, what has caused things to not work and everything, and take into account that we've had, it's been three full-time town administrators, and then, yes, in between all of those, there's interns, which I think is, is not uncommon. So, um, it's, there's been, what, six individuals, but three of them were to fill the gaps be- between the full times. So I think that that's, you know, that perspective.
Yeah, I thought the discerning part would be done under the instruction of a search firm, asking questions and sussing out what we were looking for. And maybe after you've had your meeting with them, you'll think that that was accomplished? I don't know, Leah, that...
And I, I guess I, I can, maybe, I, and like I said, I haven't had my meeting yet. Having gone through it previously, it was more of, um, kind of, I thought it was more trying to take, to find a tailored individual for Rutland and not, um, the in-depth kind of discerning work that, um, I think that this is, has taken on. And maybe that's, maybe I'm wrong. Like I said, I haven't yet met with Sharon or John, um, so, but I, I, I guess I'm kind of frustrated that we haven't even, as a board, had these conversations, and now we are with a signed agreement to move forward and still trying to now say that it's not what we thought, or what I thought, yes.
I, I think at the end of the day, I don't, I don't want to get stuck with somebody else that's not working out, and I thought that maybe getting somebody that wasn't officially a TA but was going to be, maybe get their feet thoroughly wet and see if it's for them. And, you know, maybe that's a new person that would stick around for a while, somebody that has just started thinking about TA, that didn't have all of the experience that, you know, three to five years' experience, or five to seven years, I can't remember which it is in here, but, um, and knowing that we're stepping stone, yes, that's, I guess, I know, I, I don't know where people stop until, maybe they just stop it when they're close to retirement and they're done, and if that's two or three years, but I don't... I, I'm, I apologize that I've muckied the waters, I guess.
Yeah, it's, I don't like the fact that we voted already, we went through this, and now it's, it seems like the whole thing is a little shady, but...
I don't think it's like a little shady.
It's not that it's, it's not shady. If we decide we don't want to do, this, we'd probably use the same search firm, if we don't want to do a full-time town administrator, they, this company from whatever, they could, they could find us a HR person that's interested in doing what we want them to do. I mean, we're hiring these people, it's not, they're not coming, I mean, they're, we're asking them, they're not coming and telling us what we want. I don't know, that's the way I look at it. I mean, I, I don't know, I guess...
So what are we doing?
I guess just voicing my opinion.
Well, I think everybody should, through the chair, should review this information. They should have a list of questions and, you know, speak with Paradigm and find out exactly what everybody, you know, what we're all looking for. My head's kind of spinning too because people want a grant writer, people want a finance person, people want an HR person, people want an economic development coordinator, and you can't get it all, and, and it's just cra- and I understand the need for all of it, but it's all just getting crazy and, and you're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to afford to find somebody that can do all that. So how are we going to address all those things that everybody wants, is the question. And, and I, and I think that you guys are thinking of options of whether we hire, you know, a part-time this and a part-time that, or maybe that is an option or not, but I think we need to review this because I, I reviewed this to some extent, too, and, you know, I wasn't, I, I'm not very happy with this, I don't...
A little, I already was.
Did you review it yet, Tom? I have some concerns about certain things in it and stuff like that. So I think, I wasn't quite sure what we were doing tonight because other than signing the payroll, this kind of popped up quick. So I think we need to read this, absorb it, Leah needs to have her conversation, and I think everybody needs to get some questions together so that we can all try to get on the same page. I understand, we all thought we might be going in the same direction, and then I think a lot of questions have come up, and I don't think people really know exactly, and I, and I think we're cautious because we don't want to make a mistake that's going to just cost the, the town a lot more money and go through the process again and again. So I think it's fair to say that we should review this, develop some questions, and meet with Paradigm, and see if we can all get on the same page of exactly what we want and see what's going to be the best fit for the town.
I, I agree, and I think one thing that I thought about, it doesn't matter how much money we give somebody, there's still only so many hours in a day. And I think that that's, you know, to take what you said more eloquently, thank you, than, than I have tonight, than didn't, but...
Well, it matters a little bit. How much you give them. I said it matters a little bit how much you give them, I mean, it makes a difference.
It does, but there's still so many hours in the day that somebody...
We've got to be able to afford it.
Right.
That's going to come from somewhere.
Right. And if, and if they, and if, and if we expend a lot of money on a position that is maybe unreasonably tasked, do we, do we figure out two positions that are less, you know, it might be a little bit more, but we've got two people instead of one person that we spent. Say you gave them $200,000, they still only have so many hours in a day or a week that they can accomplish everything that we want them to do. So...
And I know that John is listening, and I don't think we want to get into a conversation, but at least he has an idea of what all of our concerns are. I know that there were surveys out there from the community and stuff, we don't know, we don't have enough information. But I think it's all, all of, everybody's concerns are legitimate and, because we want to do the right thing and move in forward. So I, I think that we should review this, develop our, our questions and concerns, and meet with them and see, make sure we get going in the right direction.
I agree.
That's all, I just...
Motion adjourned.
Yes. We're meeting, we're meeting again on January 9th. Thank you. Second was done, roll call.
Okay. You have a night.
Nichols eye.
Invenoid eye.
Invenoid eye.
Thank you.